I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its political position, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A roll call of officers.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Trustee Trombley.
Yeah.
Trustee Martin.
Here.
Trustee Southwick.
Here.
Trustee Geer.
Here.
Is there any motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting?
No.
One second. Is there any discussion?
Yes. If I could, if we could go to page two, please. First paragraph, next to the last sentence, beginning with it appears. I feel that that statement is a bit arbitrary and a little bit inflammatory, and I would like to see that taken out of the minutes. I just don't feel it's that long, so we're going to take the vote in four.
Second page, second to last sentence.
I'll take first paragraph.
Beginning with it appears.
Oh.
Okay, well, is that the only correction that anyone has? So, uh...
You need a motion?
Yes, you should make a motion.
I'm going to make the motion, but that sentence being omitted from the village forty minutes of the development process.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just want to make sure that that's not a quote from Mrs. Ashland, because if it is, then it's accurate in the sense that it's just documenting what she said.
Well, actually, we need to look at some of the things we put in here. We put probably more information than we should. It's not intended to be a transcript of the meeting, but more so the record will be motions, motions made whether they passed or failed. Yes, I'm thinking maybe we shouldn't have quite as much as we should. It's really unnecessary.
Okay, it's great. I think this is a very arbitrary, arbitrary decision. The presence of a court.
Well, we don't need to take action on that. We have a motion, we need by Greg to strike that.
So.
Do you have a second?
Yeah, a second, but two.
So we need to take action on that. Does anyone else have any input? I don't remember, rebate on what was said, so I can't.
Something's said, but, as you're saying, we don't need to put off course in there anyway, so that's just a thing.
Okay, well, all in favor of making that change, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Where the ayes have it. Now, Amy's motion to approve the minutes, as read or as seen, is there any discussion on that? All in favor accepting the minutes of the last meeting, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it. Now, the presentation of petitions, communications, and notices from the general public, as neither is no one here, so we'll proceed with the report from Bernard Card.
Since our last meeting, we tried to summarize the feedback we had received from your committee and incorporated that in the revised report, and I sent several copies up. I hope you've had, I hope you've had a chance to read those, but we tried to capture your thoughts and your direction in that as much as possible in light of the financial considerations and future considerations of the water system. So with that, at this point, we can either open it up to just some general questions about it, or if you'd like me to kind of summarize that again, I can do so, but if everybody has an understanding of that.
Could you summarize it for the folks who are in the audience?
Sure, absolutely, absolutely. At our, at our last discussion, we talked about a few different things. First of all, we address water quality concerns. The existing wells have high iron and are high in hardness, and both are primarily aesthetic issues, but ones that, you know, people are concerned about, some that, well, I guess they go a little bit beyond aesthetic. You know, high iron can cause tuberculosis in your pipes, which can then help foster bacteria. It creates a higher chlorine consumption in your lines, and it also restricts flow over a long enough period of time. And I'm guessing with your high iron levels that you've had, you probably have that in some areas of the older portions of your water system. You know, I've seen some eight-inch diameter pipes that after forty years of high iron levels have openings that you wouldn't, barely get a tennis ball through, so flows are considerably restricted. We talked about the solution for that, most practically being a filter addition at your treatment plant. It would require a building addition to house several iron filters. You would feed a chemical prior to the filters to oxidate the iron so that it could be filtered out. It would also require you to have an extension of your sewer system so the backwash of the filters can be sent to your treatment plant. It wouldn't create any considerable loading for your treatment plant. It would be very, very small in relation to your daily flows, but rather than having some type of onsite treatment, it would probably be best to just connect your existing sewer system. So in the report, we provided some probable cost for that project, and then put it into perspective of a quarterly cost increase per user, so you could see it in that regard. And when it comes down to it, when it comes time to pass a bond resolution, that's, you know, what the people are going to care about most, of how much is my bill going to go up per quarter, so that they can weigh that against the benefit of having that iron removed from the water and having that, you know, staining problem and iron buildup problem not be something to worry about in the future. The hardness we talked about, for a system this size, it wouldn't be feasible to try to treat that at the treatment plant. Ion exchange, softeners, add sodium to the water, which is a problem for anybody on a sodium-restricted diet, so it's typically not done on a municipal level. With that technology, it would be precipitation, which would require large tankage and would be a considerable cost for a community this size. So it's typically handled on a house-by-house basis for hardness. Anybody that wants to add a softener can do so at their own cost and operate at their, at their own costs. It's just not practical at any municipal level for a community this size. Beyond that, we talked about your water pressure concerns. We talked about three different options in the report. We talked about, those three different options had kind of two different outcomes. Two of the options were to increase pressure system-wide. One would be through booster pumps, keeping your existing water storage tank and adding booster pumps and some automation control that would keep that pressure at the elevated level throughout your system. And the other option for keeping elevated pressure throughout the system was to construct a new water storage tank. And those two options would yield the same pressure throughout the system, the same elevated pressure. We would find an optimal pressure zone so that it's not too high for your lower elevation users, that is high enough to make it worth the increase to your higher elevation people, mainly those up on the upper end of Prospect Street. The third option we looked at would be to only increase the pressure for Prospect Street. And to do so, we would have to construct a separate distribution line for that street that would have a small booster pump station that would increase the pressure just for that street where elevation is highest and static pressures are lowest. Now, Woody just provided me with some information, some great information, apparently a study that was done back in 1992 that has the pressures at each home along that street. Several of those are below Department of Health requirements. Department of Health requires at least twenty PSI pressure in the system at all times, or it becomes a health concern. Lower pressures results in more chance of contaminants entering the system versus higher pressure, it'd be harder for them to enter the pipe. So there are some here that are, that are very concerning, and Department of Health was present at our last meeting and provided their input, and they were concerned about that as well. The good part of their concern is it will help your funding application. The State Drinking Water Evolving Fund has a very definitive scoring system, and it's based on the problems you have with your system, very specific items, and something like that that's a health concern will actually gain you points and increase your rank in that system. So, you know, at this time, it's a time you want to start to air your dirty laundry and tell everybody about your problems, because that'll help you in your funding attempt, so. So we talked about those three different options, and we took those in light of future development, both in and outside the village, and, you know, one of the greatest concerns is not only improving things for your residents, but also providing, providing, you know, these utilities to some outside users. You do have some existing outside users now, but the town is also looking at several new districts, and you also have, you know, the greater development at the border now, and to meet some of those demands would require you to have higher pressures that you don't have at this time. Some of your development, as we discussed, was limited by that. Some of the businesses that would consider moving into the area need fire protection, and for their sprinkler systems, they can't operate those under the pressure that you would provide them, so it's an additional cost for that business to move here if they've got to put in their own booster pump station or their own water reservoir to meet that requirement. So with those considerations, our discussions led to a water storage tank being the preferred solution for that. And the water tank would provide any new district that was to add on outside of the village that pressure they want without them having the added cost of a booster pump station. Any of those added costs, whether it be for an outside town district or for a new business, is one more strike against you for having those occur. And the more of those you have, the more heads you're spreading the cost of your system over. You have some fixed costs, you know, your personnel, your debt retirement, certain things, you know, just to heat your water plant. Those costs are going to stay fixed whether you have five hundred users or you have five hundred and fifty users. Those costs are fixed, yet if you have those additional fifty users, you have that many more people to spread that cost over. So although, you know, the numbers we have in the report would be the immediate cost increase to your existing users, I mean, you could actually see that go down over a period of time as you had new users connected to the system, whether it be new town districts, more development within the village, or new businesses in and around the village. So the report concludes with what the total project cost would be to complete both the water quality improvements and the new treatment at the plant for iron removal, and a new water storage tank to provide that increased pressure for your residents and for, you know, future area development. So what we had talked about at the end of the last meeting was to get the, the board's feelings on that, to talk about whether or not this is what we want to move forward on, and if so, act fairly quickly at this point to get this project on the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund readiness list. Application deadline, I believe, is August eleventh for this year's IUP intended use plan. So it, it puts you on the radar for that program for consideration. We want to continue to work on this to perhaps qualify you for hardship, maybe eligible then for low-interest loans and hopefully grants, you know, but we need to continue to identify, you know, your problems with public health concerns and so forth, document these pressure problems as much as possible to increase your score in that program. They don't have money to reach every applicant that comes in the door, so the higher you are on that list, the higher your chances are of being reached. They start from the top and work down each year, so. So what we're looking for at this point, then, is to get the, the board's concurrence or, you know, to get whatever changes you feel necessary to the program, to the report, and then to begin taking the next steps, and those would be to submit funding applications and to also move toward a bond resolution to, to act on the project. Those things need to be done. Identify the project you want to do, if it's this, if it's more, if it's last, and then to begin the funding process.
I just have one question. Is there any commitment on our part, say we decide to go ahead and try to pursue, say, a water tank?
Mm-hmm.
And say we can get, you know, the funding that we feel we need to pursue, can, can we say no at that point?
There's no commitment as far as... Completely, because you're an incorporated village, you know, you as a village board, obviously, you're the chief financial officer of the village, and you can say yes or no to any expenditure at month. If you don't get the funding package, you're looking forward to keep user rates at a certain level, then you can make that decision not to go forward. So it doesn't really commit you to anything. In fact, a lot of times, you know, if your funding package isn't attractive enough, you may want to revisit the scope and maybe the water tanks have higher priority than the iron or vice versa, and you can make those choices down the road if the funding just isn't there to your satisfaction, and that happens a lot of times. I do think, though, there isn't a benefit, in my opinion, to trying to keep the whole package together for the initial submission, because you'll get certain points for water quality issues and certain points for the low-pressure issues, and those points are additive, and if we can maximize those points, and Fred jumped in, but there's a scoring benefit that you receive by having both the improvements under one project right now. Granted, it's a larger project, the impact rates more, but...
If some of your improvements, if your improvements that are on the table are looked at separately, some of them, and looked at through the eyeglasses of the scoring system of the revolving fund, some of those improvements most likely would not score very well, some of them would score much better. If you package them all together, there's a very good chance DOH would endorse assigning a higher score to that package, because it includes some of the more severe problems you're trying to address, and that would be to your advantage as opposed to leaving, only pursuing the high-scoring element, because when you want to come in later to do the other improvements that would score low, there's nothing to hang your hat on that. If it's going to score low, you're not going to access the funding, through the state revolving fund. The only thing I want to add in there is, the only other entity that can really push you to do something on your water system is the regulatory agencies, but right now they're not knocking at your door, correct? There's no, there's no hammer hanging over your head. Okay.
Well, I do think the Health Department has concerns over the low pressure on Prospect Street. Since the water quality issues are aesthetic in nature, you know, there's no regulatory limit that you're out of compliance, it's more of a aesthetic and long-term maintenance distribution. And I think it's also a saleability issue, issue you want to try to attract new customers. It's no secret in the village that you've got iron, high iron, and it stains your fixtures, and that makes it somewhat limiting for you to market your product to outside town districts, and it's not really attractive. So that's an issue.
If I'm a business owner, I want to set up a new business, okay, yes, the dose water's there, but if I want, I need certain quality water, and I have to provide my own treatment to improve what the dose is providing, means a new additional cost to my business, and that may be enough to fit me to go someplace else. Now, Judy was here at the last meeting, and if I remember correctly, she was saying that this is the first time she's actually seen any kind of hard evidence about the pressure problems.
Yeah, they were somewhat surprised, but so I think it was a concern.
I mean, you need to show them, you know, emphasize what Matt was saying, you need to show the hard evidence to enable the State Department of Health to give you the points you need to be reachable on the state revolving fund. You know, but once the documentation's on the table, they're probably going to start wanting to heavy dress that problem one way or the other.
And what is the cost involved to pursue this application?
We'll assist you with this. The August eleventh is part of the study that, that you've already hired us to do.
Now, let me qualify what that, what has to happen. August eleventh date is a deadline by which you, the village, need to provide the New York State Department of Health, ensuring New York, information that they need to put your project on the Drinking Water Intended Use Plan. And this is the mechanism through which you, the village, will compete against all other communities for the limited dollars. The way you're going to compete is through this score that they assign your project. The score is designed to give a greater number of points to those projects that are addressing hard and fast regulatory non-compliance issues. That's where the money's supposed to be going. So the more that you can point to, the more you can point to this project addressing problems that are related to regulatory non-compliance, the stronger your score is going to be. So the, it's a simple two or three-page form, very, very simple to fill out, okay? In addition to that, by August eleventh, you also want to give them this report, okay, with your endorsement on it. We, the village board, endorsed this report that we had from our consulting engineer. We want to proceed with this project, okay, because that also affects how you're listed in the intended use plan. And with the report in hand, it better assures that you're going to be deemed, that you're going to be targeted to be ready for financing in the upcoming fiscal year, that puts you on a special list, and that's the most advantageous list you can be on, on that list with a high score. So what the objective is, by August eleventh, is to have the village submit this information to DOH to allow them to give you a maximum score, hopefully fundable, a high enough numerical, fundable score, with an acceptable engineering report that you can be put into the final version of the, of that intended use plan when it comes into effect in October first. And by, to get to your point, Mayor, you'll know when that IUP comes out where you're listed. We all take everybody else on the list, and relative to the funding line, you know, are you high enough above the funding line that you're deemed fundable right from the get-go, and we have money for you if you work towards becoming ready for financing? So this step is, is, the additional task is minimal compared to what you already accomplished. But if you don't provide this stuff to DOH by August eleventh, you're out of the, you're out of the hole for the next fiscal year until October one of oh seven.
Now, Fred, also, there's a deadline for hardship application.
Right. All right, let me talk about that. I'm going to presume for a moment that you submitted your information to DOH by August eleventh, the final version of the intended use plan is published, lo and behold, find yourself with a high enough score that you're in the fundable range of the list. We have money for you, okay? Your next step would be to apply for a, to the program for, for a determination of the type of financing that you're eligible for, the economic hardship determination. Ideally, would, would be a formal letter from EFC in response to your application that says, we've taken a look at your project's scope, the estimated capital cost, estimated own-end cost, your current expenses, the size of your tax base, et cetera, et cetera, and we deem you to be eligible for, and it'll, it'll tell you what kind of SRF financing, okay? What type of financing does EFC offer? Least attractive is long-term money that's probably going to be in the ballpark of two percent money with some fees attached. For discussion purposes, the fees, if you finance it through the SRF program, would be three percent on top of what you're borrowing, would be three percent fee on top of that, okay? That's the least attractive long-term financing we have to offer. Most attractive, if you're deemed eligible, would be interest-free loan to thirty-year money, interest-free thirty-year money, and to the amount that's needed, grant money, okay?
We want that option.
Yes, you do.
Everybody does.
How do you qualify for that? But, but you can't, you can't apply for that determination unless you're on any intended use plan, on the list with a score which will above the funding line, okay? The only way you're going to get there is to submit what needs to be submitted by August eleventh, and you cross your fingers that you give enough points, the sign to people get. But let's assume you did that, you applied for hardship determination, how do we decide whether or not you qualify for the grant combined with interest-free loan dollars? We take the village's median household income, from that, we calculate a target service charge, an annual target service charge, an annual expense that we target to get your projected service, annual water tax rate down to, okay? So let's say it's, I don't know, four hundred dollars. I forgot, I forgot what the bonus of MHI is. Unless it's four hundred dollars, we're going to try to give you terms of financing that causes your projected service charge to...
Thirty-six, thirty thousand six cents of, you know, the MHI.
Right. And I don't know what the target would be.
What is it?
No, it's a...
How long?
We have a new way of calculating a target service charge, for discussion purposes, four hundred dollars, okay? We, we say, based on the MHI, we're going to try to get you terms of financing that brings your projected future annual user cost down to four hundred dollars per year, okay? If it takes, based on your, your size of your tax base, your current annual expenses, your projected annual expenses based on financing this project, if it takes extending the term of a loan up to thirty years and lowering the interest rate, possibly down to zero percent, and throwing in some grant dollars to get you down to four hundred dollars, we will tell you that in that determination. But if it turns out that you can do it with the least attractive financing, then that's all you're eligible for, given you have two extremes. And some, some communities are only eligible for the interest-free loan dollars and not eligible for any grant dollars, or they were eligible for grant dollars and we ran out of grant money before we could get down to them on the list, okay? Again, there's another reason why getting on the list with the greatest score possible is important. And everything I just described is all related to the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund.
If we find something later on that would add to our score once we've already gotten on the list, can we resubmit that, whatever issue may be?
Yes, and they would amend your score in the next, I, you know, one that'll be in effect, October one of oh seven. In fact, everyone that's on the list right now has until August eleventh, as you do, to provide information to either list new projects or provide information that will amend for... to provide information to either list new projects or provide information that will amend the current standards.
So this isn't a real quick process, I mean, it can take a while.
Well, the IUP will be finalized, the list will be finalized by mid-September. So unless there's some glitch in the bureaucracy, by October, by October 1st, we'll have the final version available for public review, and they'll know where you stand. And hopefully, we'll get a sense of where you're going to stand based on DOH's immediate look at the documentation you're going to provide them.
We'd have a much clearer picture at that point.
Now, worst case scenario, you get on the list, but you're far below the funding line, okay? You tried, but you weren't successful. From the SRS perspective, there's no further commitment you've made. Now, the compromise, the middle position between the best case and the worst case scenario, let's say you're on the intended use plan with a score that's just below the funding line, and just couldn't get down to you. You'll have to wait about six months, but there's a chance that money that's sitting above the funding line would be freed up, because some of those communities won't be coming in for their money. That money is freed up, can be spent below the line, and if they can reach you from below the line, then you'll have an opportunity to apply for financing. Now, you won't be able to apply for a hardship determination. The most you can apply for is short-term financing and planning on getting the least attractive terms of long-term money. But at least it opens one door of opportunity for you.
Just, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Just to put that in perspective, to the conclusions of the report, the cost I have in here would be just for conventional loans, no grant. So I painted kind of the worst-case scenario in this conclusion, and that's if you qualify for no grant. So these would be the worst-case costs. If you qualify for grant, it would get better.
What page is that?
Chapter 7, page 16.
Okay, we can, will we bring that up on the new business stuff? Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thanks, very comprehensive report. Keeps like it addresses what we have hoped to address.
Keep in mind, too, you know, there are other funding programs out there, rural development, governor's office for small cities. Obviously, the Fred program is tailored specifically to drinking water, but there are some other programs out there as well, that there are some pre-application processes. At least for rural development, there's a very simple pre-application process that we urge you, you know, throw your hat in the ring certainly. And, I mean, if it comes back that you're below the funding line on the EFC program, maybe the rural development can, maybe they can get you some grant, maybe not, but maybe their longer-term interest, longer-term subsidized interest program can give you a little better deal sometimes than EFC. So there are other funding opportunities out there. And quite frankly, a lot of times, you see projects being co-funded by a number. You might get a, you might be able to look at a block grant from the governor's office for 400,000, and then go to EFC for the balance of the money through their loan program. So this is just kind of the start of throwing your hat in the ring and figuring the financing out.
From, I haven't been involved in all the discussions you've had with Robin and Matt about the air supply improvement in your water system. But some of the things, I think that's facing the village board, is reaching some decisions on how do you want to address the pressure problems, you know? Are you resolved to finding a way of building a new storage tank to boost the pressure throughout the entire system? I mean, making that decision's a large step forward. Same with the iron removal. Because whatever project it is you want to proceed with, you know, then you could take that project and put it in front of the funding agencies and see what kind of financing you can get to make that happen.
Fred, did you ever do, we had talked about a long time ago, doing an updated survey to get the MHI?
Income survey?
Yeah.
We've done, we worked with RCAP in doing surveys before. In fact, we were just in the town this afternoon, and Diane Burley was there from RCAP Solutions. She was doing income surveys for South Street. Now, why would you want to do an income survey? If you think that the median household income documented through a contemporary income survey would prove a lower MHI than the MHI that's reported through the US Census, which is based on data that was collected in 1999, that is why you would want to do an income survey. There may be a very good chance that you could be better off by relying on the older data and not looking at the contemporary actual household incomes. But, you know, every case is different. But again, the reason why you would want to do that is because if you go into the funding agencies, some of them providing an income survey result for an MHI is optional. Otherwise, example, rural development and the drinking water state revolving fund will rely on census data. Or they'll take income survey data if you choose to do an income survey. They would require, the governor's office for small cities may require an income survey. It depends on how strongly you qualify based on the census data. But they many times will require an income survey. But again, the objective of doing the income survey primarily is to show a lower MHI than the census data is reporting, to provide a stronger argument that you're eligible, you're in need of grant money.
Other than the kind of effort involved in doing an income survey, there's really no disadvantage to do it. I mean, you could always choose not to use that data, but to present the, you know, the census data, if that's going to get you your best deal. A lot, I always encourage municipalities to move forward with an income survey sooner than later, too, because what will happen is the governor will announce the next round of block grants in the spring of '07, and we'll think that you might have a shot at it, and then everybody's rushing to try to do an income survey in a month. Well, it takes more than a month to do an income survey. So it's something that, and I would recommend talking to RCAP and starting the ball rolling. If you're committed to go ahead with this project, start thinking about the income survey sooner than later. Also, what you can do, you can segment your income survey. If you know that you have particular areas of the village that have a higher probability of having lower incomes than others, you can segment your survey and maybe target, you know, say, a third of your village does qualify, two-thirds doesn't. Well, maybe you can say, well, help me finance just a third of our capital project. You know, so there are ways you can manipulate the data in order to maximize what your potential eligibility would be with the governor's office. So the sooner you get, if you're committed to go ahead, you know, as I always talk about it further tonight, I'd encourage you to think about the income survey data.
We'd be more than happy to bring Diane, who's here from RCAP.
And they have a backlog, I mean, they do this for you for nothing. And so obviously, there's a long line of communities asking for the income survey. So it takes a while to get in their queue and get it done as well, but really no harm.
Okay, well, thank you very much, your information is very helpful. Now, proceed with the report, Poytetro codes enforcement.
Well, there's not much happening. I wasn't here last month, but I did send out some letters for excessive grass, patch, and whatnot around. Most have complied. Some have just cut in front of their house, but the back is still a hay field. You need to tell me what you want me to do with that. So it's not, it's not clear from the village's code book exactly how that's to be handled. Are you just interested in what you see from the streets, or you want? You want every building?
That's where the rotas all go.
Well, we can, we'll consult with Dave Marshall and see what he thinks we should go, where we should go with our next step.
There's still one person that doesn't, doesn't wish to comply with anything, so I had appearance tickets printed. And I'm all set to issue them if you want me to go that route. I can do that, because I've talked to her, I've written letters, and nothing's happened on all the properties that they own, so. But that's about the extent of it. Other than that, the building permits are slow. There's no new houses, I know a few pools, a few decks, nice garage up on Navy Street.
Yeah, real nice, isn't it gorgeous?
Other than that, it's slow everywhere to me. The town, the village, around this point, I think I've got three new house construction permits for between three areas. I think until Wyatt settles out, whatever happens there, happens, and it's quieter.
What's the board's wishes? Do you wish to receive an appearance ticket for this one person? Would you like to make motion to have it back? Second? Another discussion? All the papers, please say aye.
Aye.
Polls, the ayes have it.
And then the rest of them, I'll just get in contact with them, tell them you have to cut all the grass, not just the trees. Other than that, that's all I have.
Thanks, Mickey. Are there any questions for Mickey's report?
No word on the Grand Union?
Well, I thought Fred had the check, but.
I had it, just couldn't get the governor to sign it.
He did have a good scenario, though. You want to tell them? That you think they know who's going to get the grants, but.
Yeah, they, I think the decision's been made, but they're just waiting for the approval to release the names, who the winners are. Well, I appreciate your frustration, it's been many, many months. And it is especially frustrating for me, because of preparing, understand, preparing materials that's going to constitute a request for new applications, because this fiscal year, they're going to have 20 million plus to compete for, where last year was just 2.5 million. So.
Do you know?
No, I, no, I.
As soon as the new application. We're going to roll over our existing applications today, Eagle? If we don't get approval, then we'll just resubmit.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. I'm hoping, though, I, well, I'm hoping, I've been hoping to date, you know, sooner than later. I have no insight at least of when the announcements will be made, and, or I have no insight as how soon they'll be coming formally out with the request for new applications.
And Mickey, have you heard anything more on the Grand Union, too? Because I heard lots of things today.
I've heard a lot of stories, but no one is officially contacting me with anything, so. Everything that you've heard, I've probably heard, plus a few other ones, so I have no idea.
Okay, no further questions. Proceed with the mayor's report. We've sent out a request for input and suggestions as potential use of the elementary school. They were sent out with the water and sewer bills, and we're waiting for input. We're recording what people vote, or how they feel about that issue. We're also, need to address a problem which has arisen at the wastewater treatment plant. They're not happy with our bag storage outdoors. So we're going to need to take a serious look at perhaps a belt photo press at some point. I suggest refer that to Greg and Steve to look into and come up with a recommendation at some point. We also have been informed that the average lifespan of, and the accuracy of the water meters is about 15 years. Most of our meters are 15 to 20. We need to investigate a course of action here, which is likely more cost-effective to replace meters or to rebuild and recalibrate. And that's something I'm going to refer to Greg and Steve also.
And that's fine, convenient.
Because it was suggested this may be a cause of some of the missing water. They're making a certain amount of water, and they're only billing for a much lesser amount. It was suggested that this might be the cause of that. And we are presently negotiating a contract between the village and Public Works employees and Keensters Local 687. Are there any questions on the report? Now, we'll see with the report of Trustee Charlie.
I really don't have much for the report, except that we did begin the work on Screw Street.
Yes, we did.
Except that it's going to end up being a little more expensive than what we first anticipated, by about $3,000.
A little bit more than that.
A little bit more than that.
About six to eight.
Are we still going to have chips money left to top the prospects?
Yes, we will. It won't be completed this year, but it'll be passed.
No, but the top that we talked about is going to get done, and no drainage of the farm.
Okay, no questions for Kim? Now, proceed with the Trustee Martin's report.
Well, I hear a lot of, I guess, a lot of comments about reading the burning current associates, but they pretty much handle a lot of the information that I was trying to report on, which is great, which is okay. They're wonderful, Bob. Obviously, our concern is, is dealing with the present problems and all this, the future, you know, our future development, and how we're going to pay for these things, and that's another issue. Also, I'd like to thank Kerry and Fred and the traveling road show for coming out there, helping us out a great deal. Your guidance and your help is much appreciated. Let's see, shared services meeting was canceled for this one. Had an equipment meeting with Amy, Woody, and Terry the other day, some short, long-range equipment replacement needs. We identified some immediate needs of the village. Front and motor, we need to replace the van, and we need a ditching bucket for street improvements. We also discussed the five-year plan for equipment replacement and the need to continue to earmark funds in future budgets for equipment purchases. I'd like to congratulate Woody and the village employees on their, on the picnic area. I've got a lot of positive comments from both the village and outside residents, so it's, I think that's a plus, a very important plus. If I could reiterate what Mayor Moore was saying about, we need some response from the village inhabitants on, you know, their comments on, probably would like us to deal with the Champagne Elementary School, which I think a village asset. And your comments are very important to this board and your decision in how we want to proceed, but. And finally, I'd like to request an executive session at the end, whenever appropriate, to discuss some personnel issues.
Okay, now, the order of the business last night. Are there any questions for the Trustee Martin? No, the Trustee South it?
Said it all. Said it all. Tim covered the streets, and Mary did a nice job.
Next month, we'll start it with Eric Moody.
But I'd like to say also, thanks, you guys. We're looking forward to working with you. I feel like we're going to look forward to this.
Let's see, Trustee Gary?
They took our mine, too, pretty much. The only one thing that we had discussed, too, in the equipment list, in New Holland, and I think we need to take a look at cutting our losses on that piece of equipment and seeing whether we get a better trade now. We still owe 27,300 until 2009. If we wait 2000, till 2009, we're not going to get anything for it. So I think that we need to take a look at, we'll be supposed to be pulling some figures for us. So hopefully, we'll have that for you next time. But obviously, it was a mistake, and we're going to take a bath on it. But other than that, we'll lay out the plan, I'll write it up, and do that. And the certification committee has not met, we haven't come up with a date where everybody is available for the summer, and what's going on. is available for the summer and what will be going on. So, but again, too, the park looks fabulous, everybody loves it. You see a lot of people down there. Some people laying out where the beach is supposed to be. We could just get the rain to stop and watch it before. That's all for me.
Okay, any questions for Trustee Garrett? Now, we'll move, move on to the report of the Club Treasurer.
Everyone's been confident with the revenue and expense report for June. We had a water billing in the amount of forty-seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two dollars and six cents and a sewer billing for seventy-four thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars and twenty-one cents.
Okay, thank you. Uh, is there any questions?
Do you want to give the bid for the, um, the capier? We've received one bid, um, from Lake Champlain, Appleosa, in the amount of a hundred dollars.
Yeah, we, we're going to, we'll bring that up under.
We had three purchase orders. One for, for.
Perisdolic.
Perisdolic kept meter pumps for five hundred and seventy-six ninety-four to come out of water at eighty-three thirty point two. Second one is fall protection harness and shock lanyard for two hundred and thirty-one sixty, um, broken down on the PO. And third is the pH meter refill solution membrane kit for ninety-seven dollars to come out of sewer G eighty-one thirty point two.
Okay, entertain motion to pay these purchase applications?
Some of them.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, question on the, the first one, uh, what else, Woody, do we have to come out of that account? The metering pumps, because we're taking half of our whole budget for the year.
This was, but these are items that were budgeted.
I understand that, but what else do we have?
We have a couple tanks that we could put off for a few months to see how, how things are going in that account. But we have to have backup pumps for chlorine and, uh, chloral phosphates.
Do these come in at what we projected for the budget or are we a little high?
We're a little higher.
That's why.
Cost increased since late.
And on the, um, harnesses and stuffs that evenly out of each of these accounts?
Yeah.
That's all.
Any further discussion? If not, uh, Trustee Chomley?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Southwood?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Mayor Moore?
Aye.
It's raining, if anybody else left their windows down.
Really raining.
Oh, they did. A couple of fog.
Oh, yeah.
Everybody right around the window.
It's only got a good day, but you need to be handy though.
Well, it does it for you.
Ooh, good angle too. The windows at home are open. We have enough recess to run home. Those are all.
Just a brief intermission.
Just a little wet.
She just left it open.
Yeah, Donnie versus Whitey.
Okay, I'd like to present the warrant for payment.
We need to add one, one voucher for Woody, um, five dollars for class he attended last week at a ninety-eight, nine point eight for five dollars and mileage for his class tomorrow in the amount of forty-two dollars.
Okay, everybody here have the conditions? Uh, entertain motion to accept the warrant?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
No discussion? Uh, be no discussion. Trustee Chomley?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Southwood?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Okay, well, now the report of the superintendent?
I'm continuing to work with the town and county for paving and I had a, I guess it's a pleasant surprise or an unpleasant surprise, uh, asphalt's going up about five dollars a ton a month and the county is going to be in the area starting next week for approximately a week and a half to two weeks to do paving. So I'm pushing to get Spruce Street accomplished while they're in the area. Allen's going to have them out on the other side of the town paving, so hopefully we can get it all done beforehand before they get up to the Church Street intersection. Uh, as we started to take apart Spruce Street, we found some questionable asphalt in there. It was only inch thick in some areas, paved right over clay, so we're having to remove all that asphalt and build a sub base. Going to increase our costs a little bit, but we're going to save the cost of having not to pay for asphalt application. So it's going to balance out the scales a little bit. The only thing that's going to hurt is the price of asphalt. Bolt launch just needs, uh, some final touch up, including the beach, providing Mother Nature stops raining. And there's a water class coming up, sending two people up to Potsdam to take the class and then I'm going up to Lake Placid the following day. I go to Potsdam class, but I have a medical appointment at that afternoon. As the board decided what we want to do with the international truck, whether you want to put it out for a day again.
I believe we voted on that last meeting. Yeah, so it's, it's got approved to put it out for a day.
And we've had problems with the telemetry unit up at the water tank. Once again, it was hit by Mother Nature. And we're looking at thirty-five hundred dollars to repair what's there and approximately twenty-five hundred dollars to repair the electric, or replace the electrical service entrance, which will hopefully eliminate our annual fight with Mother Nature and the lightning storms. They put a meeting well and have some bad news, bad news on the van that we were discussing, the front spring on the left side broke today. Uh, I'd like to ask the board, what do we want to do? Do we want to be just replacing that van outbreak or do we want to repair that? We're going to have to repair both sides. If one wack, the other one's going to go not too far behind. And we had a broken window in the New Holland. We don't know how, when and where. It wasn't broken Friday. It came, it came in this morning, got a crack right across the windshield. I'm waiting to hear from the insurance company if the glass coverage has done that. There's a public works school in October, just to keep in mind for everybody that I would like to attend. It's put on by NITOM, but I don't have any other information other than the dates and where it is. It's in Syracuse for four days. And for the board members, there's another seminar in Lake Placid that's being put on and representatives from EFC, HUD and other various agencies will be there to explain the funding. I would encourage one of the presdees to go. Jeff attended the morning session last year, was very informative.
Do you have the dates on that? September, isn't it?
September.
Eighteenth.
I think it's in the box up front.
September eighteenth, Lake Placid, just on the right.
There's no charge to the seminar, which is very, very informative as to the funding.
Yeah, I would, I would highly recommend that.
September eighteenth, Monday. Yeah, all the, uh, the funding agencies that we had mentioned that would be potential players in your project will be all represented at this meeting, or at this.
This is a full day workshop. Last year we did it for the first time, it was a cathedate. This year we're having a full day, uh, and it's focused on, uh, funding for water and sewer projects. And it's going to be covering not only the various funding programs, but also various aspects of developing a project. One general session in the morning and then the afternoon, uh, we're going to break down into two separate conferencing sessions.
Thank you, Greg. Mickey, it's going to be great.
Include your board, Woody?
Yes, and I'd like to put on that issue of the van for the business.
Okay. Uh, any questions for Woody on the report?
Yeah, where are we going to come up with six grand fix of telemetry on water tanks?
Hoping I can get it from the insurance company, some of it. Yeah, but they just paid last year.
Well, it's not like we say hello, come strike me.
Okay, well, that's, that's, no discussion on that one. Remove on to correspondence.
Correspondence from the Clem County Health Department regarding communications with the health department relatives to village issue. Correspondence from Diane Winton regarding tractor trailer traffic on Main Street. Final intended use plan for drinking water state revolving fund. Correspondence from New York State Health Department and Environmental Facilities Corporation regarding the wa, drinking water state revolving fund. Letter from New York State Health Department and Environmental Facilities Corporation regarding a draft intended use plan for the drink water, drinking water state revolving fund. Correspondence from New York State Health Department regarding emergency response plan workshop.
Okay, now under old business, uh, we did check into tractor trailer traffic and Main Street is actually Route Nine, it's a state road. Village does not have jurisdiction over that to limit traffic or any such thing as that, so. Any further information was required for that, Diane would have to contact the state DOT. Uh, GSA leaders manholes, there's nothing new on that. Time Warner cable franchise, there's nothing new. And now we have the, uh, bid on the chart copier. What is the board's wishes on that? What was it again, Woody?
A hundred dollars.
Do you entertain a motion to accept or reject that?
Do you want to tie it up, Greg, again, Jack?
You can do whatever you like. Of course, it costs to put it in paper.
Probably maybe fifteen, twenty dollars or something like that. Well, I don't know if we got those for it yet. I think they were under twenty dollars for those, so.
Like, may I have a form of motion?
He wasn't paper. Does it still work? Unless you have some other use for it.
Can we move it out of there? I can't get to anything.
What are you saying, you're slow now?
It's been up to me, I moved it a long time ago, but.
Garage can.
What was the organization that put in the bid?
Lake Champlain, Appleosa.
Well, we should, we should have a motion for too much of the discussion here.
I make a motion, we put it out to bid one more time. Second?
Second, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All polls, the ayes have it. Okay, new business. I guess first and foremost is the electrical service and telemetry unit. Um, the telemetry unit is out of service, so I think we probably need to do something there. Did we apply for insurance on that?
I spoke to Darlene today about waiting for the numbers from, uh, the electrician, but I haven't received all the quotes from him yet.
Some of this can be done with the village employees.
Correct.
Well, entertain motion, uh, place electrical service and telemetry unit?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Would that include moving it outside of that building?
Yes.
Yes, you, okay, not just fixing, but correcting it forever. Right, okay. That's all.
Any further discussion? Uh, Trustee Chomley?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Southwood?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Uh, the next item we have is applying for funding to revolving fund. Is that what we're looking to do here?
Actually, uh, two funds, two state revolving funds. Drinking water project I discussed earlier was already, the drinking water state revolving fund. However, um, with the fact that you reported the DEC's indicated to the village that they're not happy with the, uh, with your, your groundwater and the sludge.
Smoke ones, smoke ones.
Right, that, that is going to be related to a, a different state revolving fund. They're, they're very, very, very similar. That's called a clean water state revolving fund. That also has an August eleventh deadline by which you must provide our office in this case, for the clean water state revolving fund, our office with a two or three page listing or application form, or listing form, I should say. But the objective there is to provide us with the information on what it is you want financed, what is, problems is the project going to address. We'll subject that project to a scoring system. Your objective is to get as many points as possible because as with the drinking water state revolving fund, the clean water state revolving fund also has a shortage of money. People compete for that money based on a project score. And similar to the drinking water program, the clean water program, the scoring system is set up to, um, give a bigger scores to those projects that are, um, addressing regulatory non-compliance and significant waterfall problems.
Okay, well, yes, do we entertain a motion to cover both of those items?
Some of them.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I guess some other questions, can we include this potential for the South Street project at Clean Water?
The potential for this. If the village, if the village wanted to, if the village wanted to build the sewers as a village project, where the town isn't involved, form a town district, but you were to provide sewer service to properties outside the village as a village, as village customers? Follow me? Okay, you could include that improvement in the Clean Water SRF listing. Otherwise, the town would, would be, would have to put that listing in.
I don't, I don't know how that's going to play out, so I was just kind of looking at it as an option for getting the score. I don't think if it came through as an extension of us, because I know the, the town is concerned about costs associated with that, so.
I don't think the score.
But can it be submitted as a joint project? To, to have the points additive from the village's problems and the town's problems? Non-compliance issues? The town now has a consent order.
Let me go back and thought to scoring people in my office to see what, what, what could be done that would benefit everybody the most, but.
Well, any of that, we want to act on our end of the bill. So there any further discussion on that? No, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All polls, the ayes have it.
Can I pose a question, Ken?
Sure.
Okay, so, um, we, we, we can work with, with both Briney Carr and, and the village to get the listing information and all, but I think the listing information's got to be signed by and be authorized rep for the village, which would probably be the mayor, um, but we can work with Steve and Brett. Brett?
Yeah, please.
We can even sign it as the agent or the, we have before. And we're available for whatever technical support you need on the application.
Yeah, they put a lot of time and effort in this and we're completely confident in their judgment, so. Continuing the way we have. Uh, the van, I, we, I guess, I almost had the time to think about this, so maybe we could go in the executive session and bring that up when we come back, because I haven't had any time to.
I'll have something.
The options are to repair or.
Repair for now and look at replacing.
Okay, but that's another topic. Do you have any idea what that will cost us?
Yes, I do. Can't read my glasses, bud.
I hope those numbers aren't so big that you don't need your glasses.
Uh, thirteen, thirteen to. Thirteen, thirteen to fourteen thousand dollars for a cargo van.
Yeah.
Care. Well, that's the care part.
You're an optimist, though.
You're good, Woody, you're good. I haven't even looked, I just found this out, like, if they're required for this afternoon.
And can we also have one of the new business going ahead with requesting the median income getting on the list to get that taken care of? Our catch. And we'll go through that?
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All in polls, yes, have it. Well, I don't know, I guess, our only option is to repair the van, do, do, I guess we really need that? Do we want to make a motion?
Well, there's a lot of money, that's the only thing.
We don't know what it costs.
Throw it down the drain with this thing.
There's probably just a couple hundred dollars to repair it, but we're looking at more problems coming, so I just want you to be aware of it.
Why don't we settle with it on the repair? So we can act on that, otherwise we're going to have to, I mean, we shouldn't wait till next week. Right, right, I mean, I'm talking about just to repair.
Is there a state revolving vehicle?
I don't know, if somebody wanted to make a motion to affect the repair of that?
Sixty-five hundred dollars?
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All in polls, aye, have it. Greg, did you have a motion for...
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for an executive session, please.
What was, what's the purpose?
Personnel, personnel issues.
Okay, a second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All in polls, yes, have it. We will recess, after the executive session.